I want to call this meeting to order. Call for regular meeting agenda item number two invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Garza.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us clear direction on how to show our appreciation by loving and serving our neighbors. On this Thanksgiving Day, may we be especially thankful for each other, for family and friends who enrich us in wonderful ways. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to repel all which stands one nation under God indivisible with everything it has to offer.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Front row. Regular meeting agenda item for introduction of the Veterans Memorial High School Student Council. Mr. Garza, you want to let them know?
Yes, Mayor. Unfortunately, our Veterans Memorial High School Student Council Board could not be here today due to the weather, and that's basically a policy from the Mission School District regarding inclement weather and them being able to participate in after-school programs. So they're not going to be here today, but we are expecting them for the next city council meeting, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Regular meeting agenda item number four, national on the proclamation. Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, Mayor, Council. Good afternoon. I don't know if we've got Ms. Belinda Estrada here with us. She's here from Cellar Hospice Care. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas 2018 marks the ninth anniversary of Cellar Hospice Care in McAllen, Texas, whereas more than 1.5 million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families receive care annually from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States, whereas greater awareness to increase more timely access to hospice care is needed given that nearly 30 percent of Medicare beneficiaries received care for seven days or less considered too short a time to fully benefit from the range of services that hospice offers. Whereas hospice and palliative care offer those they serve the high quality of care delivered by interdisciplinary team of skilled professionals and trained volunteers that includes physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counselors, health aides, spiritual care providers, and more. Whereas the hospice and palliative care philosophy places the needs of the individual at the center of care, allowing patients and family caregivers to focus on quality of life surrounded and supported by family and loved ones despite serious and life-limiting illnesses. Whereas each year hospice saves Medicare more than $2 billion by providing solutions for physicians, care to patients, and comfort to families. Whereas a growing body of peer-reviewed research indicates that timely access to hospice and palliative care can decrease hospitalizations and emergency room visits and increase quality of life for patients and family caregivers. Whereas hospice and palliative care providers encourage all people to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes with family, loved ones, and their health care professionals. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas, do hereby proclaim November 2018 as National Hospice Month proclaimed on this the 13th day of November 2018.
Is there any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept the proclamation as read.
Hold, Mayor.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second to accept the proclamation as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Proclamation passes.
Say a few words if they've got a proclamation.
Is it this one?
Thank you. Every November across the nation, National Hospice and Palliative Month is celebrated to increase public awareness about the benefit of hospice and palliative care. This year's theme, My Hospice: A Program That Works, A Benefit That Matters, falls on the success of hospice care in the U.S. and highlights the value it brings to individuals, families, and overall health care delivery system. What began as a volunteer-driven grassroots movement in the 1970s is now part of the nation's health care system that provides care to more than 1.43 million Medicare beneficiaries and their families every year. Cellar Hospice Care offers compassionate care to relieve pain, manage symptoms, support patients and their family caregivers, and provide bereavement services for individuals following a death of a loved one. The hospice benefit has been invaluable to patients and life-saving for families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to come by over here so you can receive the proclamation and we can have a picture.
Hi, how you doing? I'm here.
Proclamation. Want to open it up so we can picture.
Everybody else over here? Glasses. Three, two, one. One, two, three.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Regular agenda item number five, proclamation. Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, Mayor, Council. I don't know if we've got a representative here from the American Diabetes Association. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the American Diabetes Association was founded in 1940 to prevent and cure diabetes and improve the lives of all people affected by diabetes.
Ms. Carrillo, could you wait for a minute so we can have the people approach you from the ...
Oh, yes. Oh, hi. Rio Grande Valley Diabetes? Okay. You're here from the Rio Grande Valley Diabetes Association. And whereas in the United States, over 29 million people have diabetes, a serious disease with potentially life-threatening complications such as heart disease, stroke, blindness, kidney disease, and amputation, whereas an additional 86 million people in the United States are at risk for developing type 2 diabetes. And recent estimates project that as many as 1 in 3 children born today will have diabetes by the time they are 50 years old if current trends continue. Excuse me. Whereas the ADA fights on behalf of the diabetes community to increase federal funding for diabetes research and programs, to improve comprehensive health care and insurance coverage, and to end discrimination against people with diabetes. Whereas an increase in community awareness is necessary to put a stop to the diabetic epidemic. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim the month of November and November 14, 2018, as American Diabetes Month and World Diabetes Day, everyday reality in the City of Mission, and encourage all citizens to recognize American Diabetes Month and join the American Diabetes Association and the Rio Grande Valley Diabetes Association to stop diabetes movement, to confront, fight, and most importantly, change the future of this deadly disease. Proclaimed on this the 13th day of November 2018.
Any questions by Council?
No questions.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second to approve the proclamation as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You all want to say a few words and then come up for the proclamation.
As she stated, diabetes is a disease that affects our community greatly. Here in the valley, you're looking at ...
Thank you.
... two people diagnosed with diabetes. For every two people, there's three more that have not been diagnosed. So that's pretty hard on our population. People don't realize how expensive diabetes is. We beat cancer, any other disease because of loss of labor, loss of a limb, medications, and, you know, the dialysis and all the complications that come with diabetes. So on November 14, we're proud to have World Diabetes Day. The Rio Grande Valley Diabetes Association is a nonprofit organization that deals with Ed algo county. And all the money that's raised here stays here for the programs that we offered. But on this specific day, on the 14th, we will be doing three screenings at different locations, one being throughout the valley. Here in Mission, it is at the HEB on Trenton, on ...
Cherry Road.
No. Cherry Road, thank you. And so we'll be doing testing all over the valley. Then after that, here, that you all are very proud of, and we're very proud to be part -- being able to use the facility, at the Mission Event Center, we will have our panel of experts. We have 10 doctors from all specialties, from cardiac to foot care to eyes to everything, that will be there in a panel, and you can ask them questions and we can discuss diabetes. Everything we do is free to the public. Then right after the panel of experts, we have the Tribute of Life, which is a tribute that we are going to pay for the people that have diabetes and the ones unfortunately that have passed because of diabetes. Y'all have any?
Any questions? Y'all want to come over?
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Okay, everybody look over here. Right here, three, two, one.
Why don't you hold it? And let me be next to you. Okay, 'cause you are.
All right, everybody look right here. And three, two, one.
Thank you.
Now call a regular meeting agenda item number six, report from the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Chapa, you want to come forth and give us a report and introduce our new ...
Good afternoon to Mayor and City Councilmen and women. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Albert Chapa, and I'm with Plains Capital Bank, but I also have the pleasure of serving as the chairman for the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. Also along here with me today are some of our board members, Ruben Ocarte, Sasa Suarez, who's our vice chairman, Sandra Vecchio, and Dan Martin. In September, we started our search for our new president and CEO, and we feverishly were looking, and we had a committee put together, and over a course of about 45 days, we were able to find our new president and CEO, Brenda Enriquez. And Brenda comes to us with a wealth of experience and background from the University of Texas RGV. We're proud to have her, and she's going to take us to the next level. And at this time, I'd like to present to you Brenda Enriquez, our president and CEO.
Thank you, Albert. Thank you, Albert, and good evening, City of Mission, Mayor and City Council members. I'm happy to be here. So this is where all the magic happens, huh?
Yeah.
So I'm going to report that we are now fully staffed. So we're fully staffed on our team, on the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. Our current initiatives right now, we are connecting with members, our members and partners, taking inventory of what they need and what they value, and then also assessing the benefits that we offer and how we serve as a resource. And so it's going to be a lot of learning in and out, so we can take inventory of that and then go ahead and evaluate our strengths and weaknesses. Upcoming events that are major in the community, we have our Mission Community Health Fair, and that is scheduled for January 12, 2009, at the Mission Event Center. We will also be having our Winter Texas Fiesta, and that is going to be on February 23 at the Placita Park in Mission. Current ribbon cuttings that we've done and to welcome the community here in Mission, we did Taco Vicente. They have really good seafood there. Also Brad Smith, they joined us, their second location in McAllen, they're our members as well. And Top Golf already became a vendor of us, our member, and they will be, we did the sneak peek, and there's going to be an opening soon for that. Some of our highlights that we've had, so I've been talking with some of our business members, and so the Mission Medical Regional Center here has already, next year, January will mark 65 years that they have been here in the City of Mission, you know, providing health care to our city and also creating jobs, about 800 employees. So we'll highlight that in the community. Also Jitters Coffee, they, this year marks their 15 years, so we want to highlight on that. So that's going to be an effort that we want to do, highlight our local businesses and how long they've been contributing to the growth and sustainability of the city. And of course, upcoming, I'll be meeting with Mayor to discuss tourism efforts and where do we want to go, and then we'll go from there.
Go ahead.
Any questions?
Any questions from the Council?
Just welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard and welcome to Mission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Regular meeting agenda item number seven, departmental reports as presented in writing. Is there any questions to any of the departments that are on your packet?
If there's no questions, I would like to move to approve.
There being no questions, we have a motion to approve. Do I hear, we have a second. Any final discussions or questions by any of the members? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Departmental reports will be on file. Regular agenda item number eight, citizens' participation. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the Council that is not, on items that are not on the agenda, you have three minutes, just come to the podium and talk and identify yourself and for the record. This is citizen participation. Anybody from the audience has, if you want to come talk for up to three minutes in any item that's not on the agenda. Any citizens' participation in any item not on the agenda, you have up to three minutes. There being no citizens' participation, I would move and call for regular meeting agenda item 1.0, our public hearing. This is a public hearing for planning and zoning recommendation and 1.1A rezoning. Mr. Osavell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of attractive land containing .94 of an acre, more or less, and being .19 of an acre, more or less, out of Lot 21-9, West Edition and Shareland subdivision, and .75 of an acre being 1.0 acre out of the southwest quarter of Section 19, La Lomita subdivision, and now 21-9, West Edition and Shareland subdivision of Portiones 53-57. Less than except .25 of an acre. This property is currently zoned R2, and the request is to change the zoning to R3. The applicant is Marta Sanchez, and if the Council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 24, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located near the East 12th Street and Highland Park intersection. The surrounding zones include R2 duplex, fourplex residential to the north, single-family residential to the east on the east side of Highland. To the west, we have R3 multifamily residential, and to the south, we have a mixture of R2 duplex, fourplex residential, and neighborhood commercial. The future land use map does reflect this area as a moderate-density residential, which would be consistent with the R3 proposal that is being requested. I will note that there's a mixture of multifamily and duplex zonings in the area, so this does acclimate what is already there. There was opposition at the P&amp;Z meeting. We did have a family opposed to the rezoning request. We also had people in support of the rezoning request. The board unanimously recommended approval. The concerns that were addressed at the P&amp;Z meeting were drainage. However, JP Terrazas was present, our city engineer, to answer any of the drainage concerns, and the concerns were from the people that live directly to the north of the proposed property where the arrow is pointing to. The drainage does flow in a southward and then eastward direction, so, but the residents were still a little bit concerned, being the fact that if they do construct, they might raise the elevation, causing some issues to their properties. We did also get a petition earlier today with some signatures of residents within the 500-foot radius that are opposing the rezoning request. We did verify the signatures, and out of the nine signatures which were submitted, only seven of them were actually registered homeowners. The other one might have been a sibling, but the seven signatures equates to about 8 percent of the area that was notified that are in opposition. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Osavell. This is a public hearing. Anybody that wants to talk in favor or against 1.1A, the rezoning, please come to the podium, identify yourself and for the record, and state your position for or against.
Steve Spoor, 2313 North Cherry Road, Mission, Texas. Mayor, Council members. A couple of corrections, Mr. Osavell, summary. The question of the moderate density, my opinion is that the moderate density would be, future land use plan moderate density, would better fit the R2 zone rather than the R3 zone. R3 zone is for higher density, and that's what this property owner is attempting to rezon to, to make a higher density than the R2. One comment that Mr. Osavell said it was a unanimous decision, it was not a unanimous decision. The chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, because of the drainage concerns that were brought up at the meeting, did vote against the recommendation, so I'm just clarifying that. There, one big thing that did come up at the Planning and Zoning Commission, as Mr. Osavell mentioned, was the drainage, that there are almost no drainage inlets in this area, this property and the surrounding areas drain east along the streets in the Pecan Heights development and go to our hole at Bryant Road, which has been a problem with drainage for a long, long time. The one thing that we are opposed to, of course, is the higher density. That was, we did bring that up at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I'm sorry, I am representing the Gonzalez's who live at 1012 East 12th Street, so just to make that clarification. But we're also representing the people who signed that petition, and the petition represents areas that are in excess of the 0.94 acres that are being considered for rezoning here. That would, in my opinion, generate the supermajority needed to pass the rezoning request. So Mr. Osavell had mentioned that there was 8 percent of the entire area, the 200-foot radius, but there's also a second clause that says that 20 percent of the area to be rezoned also would cover that supermajority needed to overturn the rezoning request. In addition to the drainage, the other thing that was brought up at the meeting was the traffic problems. This piece of property is located, surrounded by residential to the east, as you had seen on the rezoning map. Those subdivision to the east, Pecan Heights, was subdivided in 1950. Those are large lots. The lots in Pecan Heights are 14,000 square foot lots, not a great density. This density is going to be substantially greater than that. I looked at the calculations for three, the three lots in the Pecan Heights, the 100 by 143 lots, is a larger piece of property, .96 acres, than the zoning requested for this 0.94 acres. I understand that the density that was established in these residential areas are much, much smaller than the density requested for this R3 zone.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for interrupting. I just want to remind the mayor and council of the three-minute rule, but if you want to continue, I mean, you can extend it.
Bring the conclusion to your ...
The area in there that's on the screen, it has an exit, has street frontage on Highland Park Avenue. As a matter of fact, the street frontage on Highland Avenue is 65 feet. That is less than what is required under the zoning ordinance for the minimum frontage for an R3A lot. So by changing the zone here, you are basically approving in advance a variance to the zoning ordinance, which requires a 70-foot of frontage for a multifamily R3A lot versus a 50-foot frontage that would be required for an R2 lot. So I'm just bringing that up, that that frontage on Highland Park Road doesn't meet the minimum that are required by the zoning ordinance. In addition to that, the Highland Park Avenue is a, what I call a minor street. It is 32 feet back-to-back, which is a standard single-family street. It's existing. It also has parking areas that back out onto it. The, you can see there on the screen, the duplex apartments there that are on the screen, they have parking off of Highland Park, they back out onto the street, it creates a traffic problem.
You have 10 seconds.
The, okay, I'm sorry. They also have the parking, there is parking on the street. It's a minor street that will be accessing this property and a bad traffic problem. I'd like to introduce now Gage Gonzalez, homeowner at 1012 East 12th Street.
Thank you.
Hi, folks. My name is Gage Gonzalez. I live at 1012 East 12th Street. That would be the property just to the north there, towards about the center. With everything that the engineer, Mr. Spoor, had mentioned on top of that, you know, going around, I actually went around and got that petition and spoke with all the neighbors and anybody I can get in touch with on those properties, and general same concerns as far as the drainage issues go. We live there, we know what happens regardless of what the engineer says the flow of the water is. It goes into our backyards. I've got photos here showing. I've also got plenty of photos, if you guys like to look at them. The undeveloped alleyway that you guys, that the city has, that hasn't been fixed or shaped or done anything to, you're going to have strain to that with a R3 residential property. On top of that, you can also see there's no public infrastructure for walking. We've got no sidewalks, we've got nothing there. If you're going to put many families there, a lot of them are going to be going to Bryan Elementary, walking their kids to school. I see a danger on such a high-traffic area with such a small width. I can go through and show you, you know, numerous potholes and areas directly in front of that property where the street's at, where there's cracks and damage to the infrastructure already. Any additions going to be added, strain to that where traffic going in and out. As Mr. Spoor said, the frontage itself is already short, it's already small, so you're going to increase the traffic even more with all the cars that are going to be parked in there. Families have parties, may have something going on over there in an R3. Where are they going to park? They're going to end up on the street. And then that's going to be on top of the Canal's dentist fourplex that they have there, on top of the church also, who parks there on Sundays. You've got elderly people crossing. We're talking about a big jump from going from, you know, a simple duplex, duplex, fourplex to going up to an R3, we've got up to, what is it, I believe, 28 units at the max?
Well, they can build 28 units in .94 of an acre, which is about 27, maybe.
Okay, so ...
However, their applicant is only proposing to build 16 units.
But I would like to mention, if it is approved, there's nothing stopping them from increasing later on in the date, is that correct? So there we go. I mean, if a person wants to make money off a piece of property, they're going to do everything they can to maximize their profits, which I have no problem against. I have no problem with them developing an R2 duplex, fourplex, that's wonderful, great for them, but going to R3 is going to seriously affect the neighborhood and strain its infrastructure and possibly affect the drainage in a pretty heavy way. The engineers as hell said that there's no inlets on Highland Avenue, the city engineers have said that, and there's no plans in the future to do any gutters or anything like that. And it all runs from East 12th, Tallahassee. on top of the church also, who parks there on Sundays. You've got elderly people crossing. We're talking about a big jump from going from, you know, a simple duplex... Duplex-fourplex to going up to an R3, with it going up to, what is it, I believe, 28 units at the max?
Well, they can build 28 units in .94 of an acre, which is about 27.
Okay, so...
However, their applicant is only proposing to build 16 units.
But I would like to mention, if it is approved, there is nothing stopping them from increasing later on in the date, is that correct? So there we go. I mean, if a person wants to make money off a piece of property, they're going to do everything they can to maximize their profits, which I have no problem against. I have no problem with them developing an R2 duplex-fourplex. That's wonderful, great for them, but going to R3 is going to seriously affect the neighborhood and strain its infrastructure and possibly affect the drainage in a pretty heavy way. The engineers as hell said that there's no inlets on Highland Avenue. The city engineers have said that, and there's no plans in the future to do any gutters or anything like that. And it all runs from East 12th, Talma Andrew, and Highland Park and washes out to Brian. And the roads are already in bad shape. So if I've taken enough of the time, I guess I appreciate it, you know?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Would you guys like to look at these or anything?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
There's a... This is here in the back, where the locations are at and what you're looking at.
I'd love to look. I guess, Mayor and council, if I could, this is a similar request to the one we saw a few months ago in front of the Mission Library, or just south of the Mission Library, in where the applicant wanted to build five apartments on one lot, another five on another lot, and then keep the area in the middle vacant. He had an R2 zoning, and he opted for an R3 zoning so that he can build the apartments the way that he wanted to build them. That's the same thing that we have here. Because of the shape of the lot, it's shaped like a Z, it would be hard to get four duplex... Fourplex lots on this particular property. That's the reason to rezone it. But the applicant has made her intentions. They're first-time apartment builders. They're going to build a total of 16 apartments. I've seen the rendering, but he's correct. This is just a rezoning. We're not approving the site plan approval at this time, but I just wanted to share that with you guys.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody else in favor or against this request for the rezoning change?
Thank you, ma'am.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning request?
If there's any questions, I'll forward them over to your applicant.
Yes. Thank you. No other... I will close the public hearing, and I'll request the council to see what the... Any questions from the council?
Mayor, I would like to approve. Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? There is no second, so the motion dies. Is there any other motion?
My motion would be to deny the request for the R3 zone, and if we could follow up with a little more discussion, if we do get a second, so...
And keep it as an R2?
Yes, that would be my motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second for the denial of R3 and keep it as an R2 zone. This... Any discussion from any of the individual council persons?
I just wanted to see, do we have a copy of the zoning in the area? I know, I thought I had seen one.
This one, the shaded... The green shaded area is R2, and then the darker shades around the, I guess, the subject site is R3s, those are R3 properties.
And the yellow is R1, right?
The other is residential, yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
There are some apartments to the west, right, directly?
This property's kind of surrounded by apartments, yes.
Yeah. And are those like, just directly to the west of it, are those R2s as well?
No, they're R3s.
R3s?
Yeah.
The ones to the west, but the ones right next to it are R2s, right?
Those are R2s, correct.
This one's R2s.
It's kind of... It's a very regular lot.
Any other questions?
I don't...
Any other questions?
I do have a plan, and I'm sorry, my daughter got... Her baby got sick and stuff, so that's why she's not here. But I do have something to show as far as what our plans were.
Was the public hearing closed?
Yes, yes. But she's the owner, so we... Am I correct, you're the owner?
Yes, I'm the owner.
Yes. So the chair recognizes the owner for the sake of balanced discussion.
It would be a very nice place. I mean, it's not going to be anything, you know, it's our first time, and of course, anytime, I mean, there's going to be a gated area. I hear that, you know, all this is... Seems like it's just going to be put up very easily or whatever, but it's not, you know, could have been, you know, you could be building a whole lot more there in reality, you know?
Thank you, ma'am. And this I open it for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. I heard three votes, and the motion carries to deny.
Okay.
1.1B rezoning.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for rezoning of all of lots 1 and 2 of, this is of Block 7, Bonito subdivision. The property is zoned R1, single-family residential, and the intent is to rezon it to C2, neighborhood commercial. The applicant is Laura Escobedo, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 24, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject's at is located near the southwest corner of Holland Road and Idalgo Street. The surrounding zones in this area are R1. As you can see there in yellow, it's R1 to all directions. Pearson Elementary does border the property to the south. The future land use map reflects a moderate-density residential land use. The site has always operated as a neighborhood convenience store since 1983. It wasn't until recently that the applicant came in and wanted to get a... Or applied for a sign permit, that we discovered that it was zoned R1, and we couldn't issue a sign permit based on the fact that it's residentially zoned. So the applicant is applying for the rezoning to kind of make things right. There was no opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing item. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Osavilla. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning request? Anybody in favor or against this rezoning request? Anybody in favor or against this rezoning request? At this, I close the public hearing and open it for council to... For any specific questions?
I'll move to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4719, am I correct?
Yes, Mayor.
4719. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 1.1C, conditional use permit renewal, Mr. Osavilla.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and non-consumption of alcoholic beverages at La Fogata. This is at 300 North Sherry Road, being Lot 1 of El Lugar subdivision. The property is zoned C3, and the applicant is El Lugar Cabrito and Steakhouse in care of Karen Ortega. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 24, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject's at is located 1/3 of a mile north of Expressway 83 along the east side of Sherry Road. La Fogata is a family-oriented Mexican restaurant and bar that has been in operation since 2008. The most recent conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol came in January 11th of 2016, and at this time, they're seeking a renewal. The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Sundays from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. A total of 114 employees run this establishment, and parking and landscaping do meet code. There was no opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years from the issuance of the TABC license and a waiver of the 300-foot separation requirement to residences. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? At this time, I close the public hearing and open it for discussion from any of the council persons.
I move for approval.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4720. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 4720 passes. 1.1D, conditional use permit renewal.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit renewal for a drive-through service window at Taco Palenque. This is at 2420 East Expressway 83, being Lot 5C of Sherland Place subdivision. The property is zoned C3, general commercial, and the applicant is Eduardo Castañeda. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 24, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit renewal request. The subject's at is located a quarter-mile east of Sherry Road along the south side of Expressway 83, just north of the Coles Department Store. The CUP was last approved on April 22 of 2015 for a period of three years. Taco Palenque has been in operation at this location since 2010. The days and hours of operation are 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Taco Palenque does not close. A total of 50 employees man the operation. Parking and landscaping are existing, and they meet code. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of this conditional use permit for life. Staff is also recommending approval for life of use, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against conditional use permit renewal? I am closing the public hearing and open it for further discussion by any of the council person.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4721. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 1.1E, Mr. Osavilla.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Item 1.1E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and non-consumption of alcoholic beverages, also at Taco Palenque, 2420 East Expressway 83, being Lot 5C of Sherland Place subdivision. Property is zoned general commercial, and Eduardo Castañeda is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 24, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit renewal. The subject's at is located a quarter-mile east of Sherry Road along the south side of Expressway 83. The CUP was last approved on April 22, 2015 for a period of three years, and like I said before, Taco Palenque has been in existence at this location since 2010. The days and hours of operation are 24 hours every day of the year. Alcoholic beverages are only served during the state allowable selling hours. Total of 50 employees man the operation. Parking and landscaping are meeting code. This request is also compliant with Section 6-4, which requires that no alcoholic beverages be sold within 300 feet of a church, a public school, or a private school, or a public hospital. There are none of these within a 300-foot radius. There was no opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for the sale and non-consumption of alcohol until 2021, February 25, 2021, at which time their TABC license and conditional use permit will need to be renewed. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing item. Item 1.1D is now before you.
This is a public hearing. All those in... Anybody in favor or against conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? I'm closing the public hearing and opening it for further discussion by any of the council person.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4722, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries for ordinance 4722 to pass. On the consent agenda, remember the consent agenda. Look it over, council persons. Make sure that if there's any item there, any specific item, just give me the number, and we'll pull it out. I do want to call the intention that we are having three ordinances approved. If the consent agenda goes through, ordinance 4723, which would create a new committee. The committee will be titled Texas Creating a Workforce Readiness Committee, as far as that is concerned, and then ordinance 4724 will also create a committee, a committee titled 2050 Committee. This committee will be looking at the future of Mission and creating a mission plan for how Mission's going to look at the year 2050. And the other committee will be a committee of ex-elected officials who have served within the council or mayor's positions prior to... And are not existing elected officials. This committee will serve as an advisory board to the current council, mayor and council, as far as that is concerned. I did want to make it clear to the public that there are three ordinances, 4723, 4724, and 4725. Am I correct, Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Anyone? To be pulled? If not, I... Any... Any motion for the consent agenda?
Can we discuss those committees? Are any of the members being... They not selected yet?
No, they're not selected. The members will be selected on the workshop that we're going to have on... The workshop is...
The 20th?
The 20th.
For November the 20th, it's going to be... They're going to be selected by the council and from the applicants, whoever has applied.
Discussing. Okay.
This is only the creation of the committees. No appointments.
It's not under consent.
I'll move to approve, ma'am.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as a whole. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.0, approval and authorizations. 3.1, preliminary plat, Mr. Osavilla.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Item 3.1 is a preliminary plat approval of Las Comadres, number 5 subdivision. This is a re-subdivision of a 45-acre tract of land, being all of lots 19, 20, 21, and 22, and the north half of 23 of Block 3, Texas Garden subdivision. This is in our rural ETJ, the developer's Carlos G. Leal Jr., and Melden &amp; Hunt is the engineering firm. The site is located 0.09 miles south of Mile 4 Road along the west side of Texas Avenue, was being proposed as 76 single-family residential lots in our ETJ area. Each lot will be on a septic system, and each lot does measure over the half an acre required to be on septic. The Mission sewer is approximately 2.2 miles away from this location, thus the request for septic system. Streets will be constructed to the county standards. The water CCN does belong to the AWAT Special Utility District. Drainage will be via a regional detention facility. What the county did is they purchased an old calichera, a calicha pit, and the surrounding subdivisions will be draining into this calichera for their drainage. And this regional detention facility is situated at the corner of Iowa Road and Mile 3 Road. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board voted approval of this subdivision. Staff is recommending approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, complying with the street alignment policy, and complying with comments from the county planning department. Our city manager and corresponding department heads are also recommending approval. Item 3.1 is now before you.
Any discussion from the council? Any motion from the council?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve 3.1. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any final discussions or questions by the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.2, final approval, Mr. Osavilla.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Item 3.2 is a final plat approval of Oak Alley at Simraun subdivision. This is an 8.89 acre out of lot... 8.89 acre tract of land out of Portion number 2, San Jose subdivision. The property is zoned R1A, large lot, single-family, and the developer's Dr. Guillermo Marquez. The engineer for this particular plat is South Texas Infrastructure Group, LOC. The subject's at is located along the east side of Strew Road, approximately 750 feet north of Trinity Road. 27 residential lots are being... Or have been constructed via this plat. Drainage for the subdivision is via five type A inlets, which drain directly into the abutting Wilson Drainage, that's east of the property. The model subdivision rules have been complied with, and the streets have also...
The model subdivision rules have been complied with, and the streets have also been aligned as per policy. All fees have been paid. Staff did have a chance to go out there and inspect the property. We walked it through, the fire department, Public Works, myself. We met with the engineer and we walked the subdivision through. It's been constructed, inspected, and everything has passed. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager and corresponding department heads. Item 3.2 is now before you.
Any questions from any of the council?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve 3.2. Any sec, we have a second to approve 3.2. Final discussion by any of the council persons. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.2 is approved. 3.3, Chief Sanchez.
Mayor, Council. Authorization to purchase bunker gear and personal protective equipment, gear accessories from NAPCO via buyboard contract 524-17 for the Mission Fire Department. The Mission Fire Department is seeking authorization to purchase 31 sets of firefighting gear. This gear will replace sets reaching a mandatory 10-year replacement program. This includes additional firefighting gear and other gear accessories for the nine firefighter positions. The total cost of the personal protective equipment is $82,132. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 3.3. Any final discussion by the, any council person? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.3 is approved. 3.4, Chief?
The Mission Fire Department is seeking authorization to apply for the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant. The Department Suppression Division will apply for five automated and external defibrillators in the amount of $6,525. The Prevention Division for a fire extinguisher digital simulator in the amount of $12,327,000. The total amount is $18,852. There is no cost share match for this grant. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'll move for approval.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion by any of the council person? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.4 is approved.
Thank you.
3.5, approval of certified 2018 tax roll, Ms. Vela.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 3.5 is approval of the certified 2018 tax roll. The total taxable value is $4,224,845,48, which results in a total tax levy of $20,411,953.37, of which $17,070,136.41 is in the MNO, and $3,341,817.16 is in INS. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.6, tax collection report, Ms. Vela.
Item 3.6 is a tax collection report for the month of September 2018. The total tax levy is $20,028,680.78, and the amount of collections as of September 30, 2018 is $19,370,557.22, which represents 96.71% of the tax levy. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion and a second. I do have a question. Do you know whether the tax reports have been sent out to the public?
Yes.
Yes, they've already been sent?
I believe so, yes. I know, I've had some people say they've already gotten them.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm in denial.
Huh?
I'm in denial.
You're in denial? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Vela.
Thank you.
3.7, Mr. Pittis.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. 3.7 is the, staff is seeking authorization to allow the city manager to submit a letter of intent to apply for the 2019 All America City. The 2019 All America City theme is creating healthy communities through inclusive civic engagement. The 2019 All America City is focused on celebrating examples of civic engagement practices and advance health equity in local communities. The schedule is that follows the November 14 is the deadline to submit the letter of intent to apply for the, for this award. March 6, 2019 is to submit the application, and they will announce finalists on April of 2019. At that point, they'll schedule competition preparations for April through June, and June the 21st to the 23rd would be the final event and competition. And so, the cost of submitting this application is 250. With this letter of intent, it reduces by $100, and so it'll be 150. At this point, staff and city manager recommend approval is the submittal.
I move for approval, Mayor. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 3.7. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. 3.8, Mr. Cardoza.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item 3.8 is the authorization to accept FY 2018 Emergency Management Performance Grant. The Office of Emergency Management Division is seeking authorization to accept the Emergency Management Performance Grant for fiscal year 2018 in the amount of $35,332.53. The requirement of the grant is to pay for a portion of the salary of the emergency management staff. The city must maintain an emergency management plan, conduct and document exercises, and be compliant with the National Incident Management System. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve.
We have a second.
Second.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.8 is approved.
Thank you.
3.9, Mr. Bilmaris.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I bring before you item 3.9, authorization to award contract for ambulance services. The city received three proposals from one provider. One provider was found to be unresponsive or non-responsive. Evaluation committee was comprised of the police chief, fire chief, and emergency management coordinator, who reviewed and evaluated all proposals submitted on a set criteria outlined in the RFP. Recommendation is to award to Yado County EMS. Ambulance Board approves the recommendation as well.
Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I would like to discuss this on an executive session, if it's allowed.
If there's any legal questions, there is a posting that allows to go into executive session if there are legal questions regarding this solicitation or award.
I do have some questions.
Some legal questions? Yeah? Yes.
Was that a motion? Did you move to go into executive?
You moved the motion? And do we go into executive session for legal consultation on 3.9? This I open it for discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Stand by, Mr. Bilmaris, in case we will be going into executive session in accordance to BTC Government Code, Section 551.001, for legal opinions or requests or issues. As a chair, I will entertain a motion to reconvene from executive session. Do I hear a motion to reconvene?
I'm going to recommend.
We have a motion to reconvene with a second. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, and we reconvene. Now we'll call item, agenda item 3.9. Mr. Flotis of Ternan.
Yes, Mayor. No, just having addressed all of the council's legal questions, if there's no, if the council is satisfied with the answers, you may proceed with whatever motion the council wishes at this point regarding the item.
Mr. Bilmaris, do you have anything else to add?
No, sir. At this time, that's all I have for you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I would like to pose that we deny what is requested and approve Medicare EMS with a two-year contract with a one-year renewal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny Yado EMS and approve Medicare for two years and one year renew? First and second?
Second.
Any final questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.9 is approved as presented by Ms. Ochoa. I will call for item 310, and Mr. Chief Dominguez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item 310 is authorization to enter into an interlocal agreement between the City Mission and the City of Palmhurst to provide temporary housing for prisoners. The interlocals for the temporary housing and detention of prisoners awaiting arraignment. The Mission Police Department agrees to make use of their holding cells for prisoners of the Palmview Police Department, subject to the availability of space based on the facility's capacity. The temporary housing of prisoners will be at a cost of $54 per day, per prisoner. The cost includes detention, transportation, and meal costs. The term of the agreement is for one year, commencing on October 1 of this year and ending at midnight on September 30 of 2019. The staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Do I hear a motion? We have a motion to approve?
Second, Mayor.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 310 is approved, Chief, and 311, Chief?
Item 311 is authorization to purchase one ICX floor Skywatch Frontier Tower system through a Source Force vendor for the 2017 Operation Stone Garden Program grant from the Office of the Governor. The Office of the Governor has awarded the Mission Police Department $250,000 for the 2017 Operation Stone Garden Program grant. Grand funds in the amount of $150,000 will be allocated for the purchase of the Skywatch Tower, the standard cap system at $154,413. The Mission Police Department will pay the difference of $4,413 through the state drug forfeiture account. Staff and city manager recommend approval of this item.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A motion carries, 311 is approved, and 312, Chief?
Item 312 is authorization to accept the 2018 Homeland Security Grant Program Fund from the Office of the Governor, grant number 3630001. The Office of the Governor has awarded the Mission Police Department $37,261.49 to purchase SWAT equipment. The purchase is for 13 Omni-Aid night vision monocular sights and 13 helmet mounts. The night vision sights will be utilized by our SWAT team for nighttime operations. The total cost of the project is $39,445.64. The Mission Police Department will supplement the difference of $2,184.15 through the state drug forfeiture account. Staff and city manager recommend approval to accept the grant.
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to approve 3.12. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Chief Dominguez, 3.12 is approved. 313?
Item 313 is authorization to purchase 15 ticket riders via Source Force vendor being Tyler Technologies. The ticket riders will be utilized by a patrol officer to issue out electronic citations. This system allows users to utilize all aspects of their electronic citation solution through a web-based interface. The total cost of the purchase will be $34,991, which is, will be paid through the Mission Municipal Court Technology Fund. Staff and city manager recommend approval for the purchase.
I move for approval.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second to...
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 313 approved, Chief.
Thank you.
314, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Second before you, seeking approval of work authorization number 13 with Javier Nogosa Engineering related to the Bryan Road Reconstruction Project from Business 832 FM 495. Work authorization number 13 entails plan specifications and estimates for Bryan Road Reconstruction. Project improvements include roadway reconstruction, stone drainage, curb and gutter replacement, utility adjustments, and asphalt overlay. Staff recommendation, it's approval of work authorization number 13 with Javier Nogosa Engineering.
Do I hear a motion for approval?
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 314, Mr. Salinas is approved. 315, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir. Mayor, item 3.15 is the approval of Senator Sewer Connection and Service Agreement between the Lucky J Street residents and the City of Mission. The City of Mission installs sewer facilities at the proximity of Lucky J Street and Morphew Road. Lucky J Street home residents decided to privately install sewer service to properties located inside the City of Mission sewer CCN. City of Mission agrees to provide retail sewer service until such time as City of Mission constructs utilities inside the subdivision of request. Agreement between the City of Mission and homeowners is attached to this document. Staff recommendation is approval of agreement.
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 315 is approved, Mr. Salinas. 316, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, item 3.16 is the approval of change order number two and substantial completion for the 4.5 million gallon per day wastewater treatment plan expansion project. Change order number two entails reconciliation of construction items related to additional work mainly on concrete pavement and trench safety protection, with credits mainly on electrical service and erosion control with no increase in contract time. Change order number two will increase construction cost by $90,109, increasing current amount from $15,080,166 to $15,170,275. Change order is under the 25% at 2.21% from the original contract amount of $14,841,556, and this is of course set by the Texas Government Code. Staff recommendation, it's approval of change order number two with RP Contractors, Inc.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 316 is approved, Mr. Salinas. 317?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, item 3.17 is the authorization to purchase equipment via state-approved contract for the Public Works Department. Staff seeking authorization to purchase via state-approved contracts for capital overlay equipment for Public Works Department. Equipment includes excavator and baycap tractor truck. I have the itemized equipment attached that lists with the actual cost and respective contract number. Staff recommendation is authorization to purchase via approved buyboard contracts 515-16 and 521-16.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve 317, and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 317 is approved, Mr. Salinas. 318?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, item 3.18 is the authorization to award bid for liquid polymer for the north and south water treatment plants. The City of Mission has accepted an open one bid response for liquid polymer for the north and south water treatment plants. Staff recommends award to Ford Bank Services, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications. Again, recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on a as-needed basis throughout the one-year base term. Staff recommendation is award bid to Ford Bank Services.
I move for approval.
Do I have a motion and a second to approve 3.18? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 318 is approved, Mr. Salinas. 319?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, item 3.19 is the authorization to award bid for corrosion inhibitor for the north and south water treatment plant. The City of Mission has accepted an open two-bid responses for corrosion inhibitor for the north and south water treatment plant. Staff recommends award to Shannon Chemical Corporation, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications. Again, recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on a as-needed basis throughout the one-year-based term. Staff recommendation is award bid to Shannon Chemical Corporation for this chemical.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve, three point nineteen.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three nineteen, Mr. Salinas is approved. Three twenty.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, item three point twenty is the authorization to award bid for liquid emulsion polymer for the wastewater treatment plant. The City of Mission has accepted an open one-bid response for liquid emulsion polymer for the wastewater treatment plant. Staff recommends award to Ford Bank Services, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specification. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on a as-needed basis throughout the one-year-based term. Staff recommendation is award bid to Ford Bank Services.
More to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point twenty is approved, Mr. Salinas. Three twenty-one.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, item three point twenty-one is the authorization to solicit bid for utility materials for Mission Tennis Center at Berwick Park. Staff is seeking authorization to solicit bids for water, sanitary sewer, and storm drainage materials for the Mission Tennis Center at Berwick Park. Project utility improvements will be constructed by the Public Works Department. Staff recommends solicitation for bids.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion in a second by Mr. Martinez. Item three point twenty-one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three twenty-one is approved, Mr. Salinas. Three point twenty-two, Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, Mayor, Council, item three point twenty-two is authorization for Mayor to execute letter of support on behalf of the City of Palmhurst for the 2018-19 Sidewalk Improvement Project application to be submitted to the Adalro County MPO. The Sidewalk Improvement Project grant application will be for the Transportation Alternative Program. The proposed sidewalk will be approximately one-point-four miles long. It's going to be constructed along three-mile road between Stewart and Tater Road, and the City of Palmhurst has requested this letter of support by the mayor to be submitted to the MPO.
I move for approval.
Second. And a second to approve the three point twenty-two. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three twenty-two is approved, Ms. Carrillo. Three point twenty-three, Mr. Perez.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item three point two-three is the authorization to participate in a cost-sharing expense for the AEP rate case. AEP has taken action to request a significant rate adjustment to cover losses due to repairs and damages caused by recent natural disasters. The City of McAllen has taken the lead to advocate on behalf of the cities and have engaged the law firm of Lloyd Gossling to intervene and represent the coalition in this case. This is not a regular rate case, and therefore there are no reimbursable provisions. The Lower Grand Valley Development Council has coordinated a region-wide approach to review the proposed rate increases, which has resulted in cost savings to constituents throughout the valley and have prepared a pro-rata contribution for each of the cities with the AEP distribution. So the pro-rata contribution for the City of Mission is three thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars, nine-nine cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Martinez on item three point two-three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point two-three, Mr. Perez is approved. Three point two-four, Mr. Perez.
Yes, sir. Three point two-four is a gen item, discussion in action on proposed wage increases and EMT certification for the Mission Fire Department. Attached are the proposed salary increases and EMT certification for the Mission Fire Department as discussed at the collaborative meeting of November the eighth of 2018. On page two ninety-seven is a proposed salary increases that were discussed at the meeting that was presented by Chief Sanchez, and it is the option four, which is the percentages as distributed illustrated, and it is for the firefighters, engineers, lieutenants, captains, deputy chiefs, assistant chiefs, and chief. At this time, we are staff is seeking direction. If you have any questions, I'd be.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I have some questions.
Okay. Go ahead. We'll start from you, Ms. Ochoa.
Okay, so from our workshop, we agreed that they were going to go back and discuss the raises and closing the gap.
Yes.
And so this is a little different. They decided to add how many more employees?
Well, what happened, and this is the dis- the what was taken is this is a proposal from the chief that was proposed, and it was the amount of the two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand if you see the bottom. So the distribution is based on the distribution to include all the firefighters, to include the senior ranking officers as well. And so it's to include the firefighters, it the amounts changed for what is what was presented, and to be able to meet the budget amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand to include the thirty-eight thousand, and that's an estimate of thirty-eight thousand for the EMT certification pay as presented. That was the distribution that was presented from the chief as his recommendation for the plan to increase at that point.
Any other question, Ms. Ochoa?
So I guess my question would be, how would we usually get, because the chief and the assistant chief are not civilian, I mean, they're considered civilian employees, right? They're not civil service?
That's correct.
So how would they get a raise if it wasn't through this on a regular basis?
The historically, we've done civil service and non-civil service increases, and then at the non-civil service increase, the chief and the assistant chief at that point would get a an increase.
And how much is that? How much money is allotted to the chief and to the non-civil service?
Based on this presentation here, we're looking at the proposal of five thousand, four seventy-five for each, yes.
And how much was the firefighters? Was it two percent or three percent?
Thirty-three firefighters.
Originally, it's it's a little bit less than three percent of what's being proposed here, an amount of nine-hundred-and-twelve dollars.
But a little bit more than two percent?
Yes.
Based on the calculation that I made, I think it was a two, two-point-one-six percent.
Yes.
I met with some of the firefighters, and I know this one, they'd be saving five bucks, okay, out of the two sixty. The proposal that I reviewed today.
Yes.
Based on for the effect that will have for the fiscal year 2018, 2019, I came out with two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, seven hundred, am I correct, Angie?
Yes.
Based on Mayor giving raises to three percent to twenty-one firefighters, filling, taking care of the gap, and including the two non-civilian, I mean, excuse me, non-civil services, which is the.
Can I let me pass that out, so.
Copies of that option.
I like to work with numbers, and I like to do it to the penny, so I think I, Angie and I.
When you say close the gap, when what what amount?
To take care of the gap that they are.
A thousand-dollar gap?
Yes, sir. Because they have thirty-three firefighters, but actually only twenty-one will be getting a raise since the other ones are on the thirty-seven thousand entry level. So that will not have effect on this fiscal year, and still takes care of the thirty-eight thousand, three forty-five thirty for the EMT, and it takes eighteen thousand, four sixty-one for the education longevity, and takes care of the gap, which should be under the two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars that was allowed to them, and we even including the assistant chief and the chief to get the raise. Am I correct, Angie?
That's that's correct.
So I would like to bank a recommendation that we make this one, I mean, and this is starting on December the third, and the remaining, because two years, two months have already passed, so we save about, I mean, to finish the year, that's pretty much the budget amendment that we have to make, and that inclusive in benefits.
Yes, I have a question based on this report, because the last calculation, we calculated thirty-three firefighters, and this is twenty-nine, twenty-one, which means that the twelve of the firefighters are still going to stay at forty-two, oh, forty-eight?
Mayor, to clarify on that, there's nine firefighters that are in the safer grant, and they'll be in the one-year probation, so they won't be at the forty-two thousand entry level salary pay. They'll they'll go into effect the next fiscal year, and then three of the existing firefighters are currently in the probation that are not part of this starting salary, so that makes the twenty-one if you reduce the twelve from there.
And at what point during the budget year are they going to be eligible for it?
At next, we would have to budget.
Forty-three, forty-three, three oh-nine.
We would have to budget that full amount next year, next fiscal year.
So it'll be October the first, 2019?
If that's at the point that they receive their probation, but at the city.
But if it's not, if it's before that?
We we will budget the full amount at that point, which is a forty-three thousand, because in that fiscal year, they'll they'll be eligible for that pay.
From where are you going to budget it?
Excuse me?
From where are you going to budget it, because we're spending the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand here?
Well, and that's and that's something that could be discussed at the.
Or are you going to take that money out of the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and put it on hold?
That's that's at the, you know, the council's direction at that point, sir. I do have.
Is there a reason why we're starting December third? Is that the start of a pay period, or?
Yes.
Okay, so it wouldn't be December first?
Yes, December third is a Monday.
A Monday.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Right.
And just to, because the nine firefighters haven't gotten hired, their one year would be after October first of 2018.
So that's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, that's what I.
That's what I wanted to hear, that they're not going to be eligible before, because because if they're going to be eligible before, where are you going to get the money?
No, we hired them after October first.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Medina, for clarifying.
And and if I may, Mayor, on the on this proposal here, the eighteen thousand, four sixty-one, we would, we would, I would ask to that we exclude that, because it's not part of the agenda discussion as as presented at the agenda. Currently, it's wage increases and EMT certification, and this is for education pay. So I would ask to exclude that.
That's another separate agenda item.
That's correct.
Ruben, do you want to adjust your motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that is effective December third, 2018, that this salaries increase going to affect and the gaps.
Can we call this option three or two?
Option five, I think.
Or option five?
Option five, because the the option the chief presented was four.
Okay.
So.
All right, so.
We have a motion on the floor? Do I hear a second?
I would second that motion, and also to clarify that this is option five that we're accepting and deleting the education item for eighteen thousand, four sixty-one to be brought back at a later date.
Any questions before I ask for a vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Three point two-four, Mr. Perez is approved. Three point two-five, adoption of ordinance forty-seven, twenty-six.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item three point two-five is an amendment to the City of Mission Code of Ordinances, Chapter forty-two. This is with regards to health and sanitation, Article four, smoking, by adding Sections forty-two dash one thirty-seven, exceptions. Currently, Article four, smoking, Chapter forty-two does not provide for exemptions. The intent of this amendment is to allow for exemptions of this chapter for restaurants and bars meeting certain criteria in the interest of economic development. Section forty-two dash one thirty-seven, exceptions, would add the following. With regards to designated smoking areas by restaurants and bars, those seeking an exemption must meet the following criteria. One, they must provide an exhaust CFM cubic feet per minute plan to be approved by the Mission Fire Department and by the Inspections Department. These plans are usually drawn up by a MEP engineered, so it'll be a plan that's signed and sealed by an engineer. Number two, they must have an enclosed non-smoking area, not less than fifty percent of the total floor area, meaning that the smoking area cannot be greater than fifty percent of the general floor area. Number three, non-smoking areas should also have a sufficient number of signs posted, which can readily be seen by patrons stating that smoking tobacco is prohibited. And number four, smoking, the smoking area to be completely enclosed and independent from the general floor and equipped with a separate ventilation sufficient to prevent smoke from entering the non-smoking areas. Mayor and Council, the proposed amendment mirrors the laws of the state of California. Currently, in the state of California, they did pass this law, and what makes it unique is that if you go into a restaurant in the state of California that does allow smoking, it must be in its own little enclosed room or partitioned area with its own separate ventilation system. They're the only state in in the research that I've done that allows this type of system, and that's what we're proposing here today. And what brought us here is that a local business has expressed some concern of people leaving his establishment without paying their tabs. Our current smoking ordinance says that people must go outside twenty feet from the front door or the back door to smoke a cigarette, and this gentleman approached us stating that he's been losing a lot of business because people are going outside to smoke, they're leaving, and not paying for their tabs. So I've been working with Chief Gilbert Sanchez and trying to come up with an amendment or some rules that may be able to help in the interest of economic development, and this is what we have come up with for your consideration. Item three point two-five is now before you.
Yes, I also want to add that several of the international restaurants have indicated also that to for them to come to Mission, they would like to see something like this. And besides besides this, I also want to add that this is an exemption. This is not changing our, this is only an exemption for restaurants and bars that meet this criteria. That's I do want to make it clear for the public to understand that, that they have to meet this criteria, otherwise we're not changing the ordinance per se.
That is correct.
A holistic ordinance of no smoking. You know, all other, all other facilities, all other areas, nothing, nothing changes.
That's correct.
And this I open it for a motion or discussion.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is the owner of the restaurant here?
The owner of the restaurant is not here, but he did send a representative. Like Dr. O'Kanya, Mayor O'Kanya mentioned, the owner of this particular restaurant is from Mexico.
Okay, I'd like to speak to the person that's here. Are they here?
Oh, yes, I'm here to represent Mr.
Okay, can you please come forward? I have a couple of questions for you.
And we'll let you, we'll let you speak after it, after that, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay?
Hi.
We'll allow you to speak.
I have a couple of questions for you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Your name?
Nino Codina from Codina Walden.
What has the establishment done in reference to calling law enforcement or something whenever the patrons go outside to smoke? That's my first question. And my second question is, have you designated an area twenty feet from your establishment, either in the front or in the back?
For smoking.
Security possibly, or something to prevent this from happening?
Yes, when I talked to the owner, he he didn't mention anything about, I'm actually, he's the one that wanted to contract our company to do the exhaust on the ventilation areas.
Okay.
But I didn't, I'm not responsible for, I mean, not responsible, I'm just here to represent the exhaust part.
The system.
The exhaust.
The technical system.
Yeah, because he had a, I know if there was going to be any concerns or questions. You're just, it's basically sixty CFMs per person smoking, and if this passes or whatnot, depending on the size of or how many people are allowed on the on the smoking section, we can make up for that CFM or that air, just so we can have proper ventilation for for smokers. Due concerning that, on the security, your police, he didn't mention anything to me about that. He only, I only talked to him about.
The chief is signing to me that nobody has called to make any type of complaint or a police report?
As far as I know, I mean, I would have to go and check, but it's not a prevalent thing as far as that restaurant, they're calling because they forgot without saying creating the fact that this case affected.
And the problem with that argument about how people are walking out to smoke and and leaving, that isn't, that doesn't have anything to do with with whether you smoke inside. That seems that they're asking this council to do them a favor instead of being fair. To a certain degree, you have to police yourself. Now, because you say that someone is leaving your restaurant to smoke, and they're taking off, that alone should not trigger a change in the ordinance to accommodate an enclosure. What should happen there is you talk to the chief, you figure out, you put cameras, you do something, or you don't even allow smoking outside. This is not something that goes from A to B. It's a huge gap between what they say is a problem and what they wanna do.
I don't think there's been a lot of complaints from other restaurants in the area. I mean, I think the ordinance that we have in place is working well. To me, it's like we're going back. It's...personally, I don't feel comfortable with the recommendation.
I may add, Mayor...
Hold on before I need to let the lady that wanted to speak come up in front and so she can say her...
Good evening, Mayor. Actually, there's three of us, and I'm gonna be respectful of your time, but...
One of you can speak if you're gonna speak about the same issue.
No, we're gonna just touch on different subjects. I will stay within my time limit unless you have any other questions. First of all, my name is Gilda Bowen. My name is Gilda Bowen. Y'all probably remember me from the Tobacco Prevention and Control Coalition. That coalition has currently moved on to other counties. I am no longer the coordinator. Tonight, I am here as a Mission resident and a very concerned citizen. Almost two and a half years ago, in June of 2016, the community of Mission, a lot of people, if you will remember, if not, there's pictures, came before you. This room was standing room only, and this commission 100% approved unanimously the smoke-free ordinance. I wanna respectfully disagree with the comment that there are no exemptions, because there are some. I'll let Mr. Acevedo talk about that, but there are exemptions for this ordinance that you currently have in place, which are for cigar bars, et cetera. He can go into that. So the other note is, that's correct on the issue of this restaurant of people walking out without paying. Seems like a security issue and, you know, something else to address. I think that if you want to consider any issues or problems with the current ordinance, then maybe we could look at other solutions instead of just going back and regressing. The City of Mission is described as the place to be. I'm very proud to be from Mission, very happy for the progress, very excited about your tennis facility and everything that you're going forward. And making this minor, minute change that you believe is minor is really major. You're going back 20 years. You're gonna go back and undo something that was phenomenal. And statewide, this area is being recognized for standing up and protecting the public health. Mission is the third city out of 20 cities that are currently smoke-free in Hidalgo County. And you should be very proud of that, and I'm proud to be part of Mission. And I completely disagree and oppose making exemptions. The minute you start making exemptions and compromising, you're compromising a lot of things, and there's gonna be more confusion to people in the community saying, "We're allowing smoking here, we're not smoking here." They don't know about ventilation systems, but by the way, they don't work. There's plenty of research behind that, but I'm gonna go beyond my three minutes. I'd be happy to share information from the U.S. Surgeon General, from the World Health Organization, from the CDC, Center for Disease Control, the asthma and allergy, even the European Commission for those international companies that want to come in. They're saying these ventilation systems do not work. The only way you're gonna protect people is by not allowing smoking indoors. And so we're not trying to ban smoking. People have the right to smoke and do what they want with their bodies, but people don't have the right to affect my health and by going into places where there's secondhand smoke, that it's gonna get to me no matter how many rooms away you separate it. I feel like it's unfortunate, and so I respectfully disagree with this movement and this motion and hope that you remain a smoke-free city, which will keep you...I don't know if the... Y'all passed out the handouts?
Yes.
The handouts, when we were here before you, when you passed this ordinance, there was not even 50 cities that were smoke-free in Texas. Right now, there's 104 cities. So you were part of this movement. You were part of the leadership, and I don't expect anything less from this wonderful city that we live in, so why would we go back? Let's move forward. And I'm here personally to stand for any public health issue, not just smoking. I said, "That's not my job. I'm here on my time," and I really hope that you consider this very seriously before you make this vote.
Mayor O'Kanya, Mission City Commissioners, my name is Jerry Acevedo. I'm with the American Heart Association, here on behalf of all of our volunteers and members who live here in the City of Mission. I just wanted to say, I'm pretty confident that California does not allow smoking in any indoor workplace, especially restaurants and bars. As we mentioned last time that we talked about this issue, restaurants and bars are the places where workers are most exposed to secondhand smoke, bartenders, waitresses. When they go into work, that's the only profession where, in too many parts of our country, they're being exposed to deadly secondhand smoke just over the course of an eight-hour work shift. That could be the equivalent of smoking up to 36 cigarettes. And so the City of Mission, like Gilda mentioned, was one of the first cities in the Rio Grande Valley to pass a comprehensive indoor smoke-free workplace ordinance. And after that, you know, other cities all across the Rio Grande Valley, there's not a city anywhere near here that allows smoking in indoor workplaces. And so this is actually a very big amendment. If passed, that would be very detrimental. We're involved with all the national health organizations that evaluate cities and evaluate policies regarding smoking, and this...none of them allow smoking indoors. The Surgeon General, all of the statistics have shown there is not any ventilation system that can protect workers and it filters out all the deadly chemicals and secondhand smoke. The people that make the ventilation systems, I can share a detailed report, the association that represents the ventilation system folks, they have come out and said, "Our ventilation systems do not... they're not a solution for protecting people from deadly secondhand smoke." The Surgeon General has been unequivocal. The only way to protect people from secondhand smoke is to eliminate it indoors and just simply ask folks to go outside. And so just on the science, I'm just here to let you know that that is absolutely false, that that's a solution, and that's a compromise. And mentioned that there are no exemptions in the current ordinance. The current ordinance, Section 42-127, it says that the following exemptions exist: hotel and motel rooms, 25%, outdoor seating areas of restaurants designed as a smoking area. And that was really the big compromise two years ago, was we're gonna eliminate it indoors, but we'll still allow people to smoke in an outdoor patio. So that...there's already been a lot of compromise. Private clubs such as VFW halls and the like, private residences, retail tobacco stores, cigar bars. There are currently a lot of exemptions already in the ordinance. And so I wanna be clear that adding this exemption takes the city back to where... what the whole point of passing the ordinance a couple of years ago was, was to eliminate smoking, especially in restaurants and bars. And so we're 100% against this and ask you to please don't take the City of Mission back and have it be the only city on the map that's not a comprehensive smoke-free indoor workplace city.
I'll be very quick. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, and Councilwomen. I'm April Chapa. I work with the American Cancer Society as well as the Mission residents. So my goal here is twofold. Of course, American Cancer Society, the City of Mission hosts our Really for Life. They host it every other year as we change school districts, and that is definitely no smoking and no exceptions on that because you do support the American Cancer Society and our Really for Life in our schools and the businesses and sponsors that support it. I do, you know, I don't wanna take more time, but, you know, the local exhaust ventilations, they just...they don't work. I do have information on that. I just really want you all to think about what this would be affecting, who it would be affecting. Not only the workers, it could be your sister, your cousin, anybody that gets a job in waitressing. There's...the way you think about it, when you light a candle in another room, you have a fan, you're still gonna smell it in the other room. Exposure to secondhand smoke at any level is neither safe nor acceptable. The health conferences are immediate and can be life-threatening. Because the ventilation allows tobacco smoke to travel throughout a room, it offers little protection from secondhand smoke exposure and can even distribute secondhand smoke throughout a building. So in addition to it being ineffective and maybe costly for businesses to do, so please, I just really encourage you to vote against this. Even the U.S. Surgeon General has concluded that separating smokers from non-smokers, air cleaning technologies, and ventilating buildings cannot eliminate secondhand smoke exposure. Research has shown that tornado-like levels of ventilation would be needed in restaurants, bars, and gaming establishments to protect hospitality workers from secondhand smoke. And there's many examples that I have that supports that. So please, I encourage you to vote against this, not only for myself, for restaurant workers, for children, anybody that's in the next room. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you all have any questions?
No, I don't. I don't. I think you was pretty clear. Does the council have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
Mr. Acevedo, what are we doing for the future of really doing the code enforcement part of it? I would like to hopefully see in a future a staff member that actually does oversee this type of... this restaurant that's having this issue, or any other restaurant and bar that has this type of issue, because I have gone to several places and noticed that they do smoke in places where they probably shouldn't. And I know that we've been very lenient in the past with just not really looking into those type of things. But I think that we're at a position now that we probably need to take a serious look and see how we're going to be addressing this issue since we do have a concern and a complaint.
And well, in the past, we've had code enforcement officers work on the weekends to monitor garage sales and other activities. We can definitely start a rotation where code enforcement officers work evenings to visit such businesses and establishments. We don't have too many in Mission, but we can start a rotation where code enforcement officers are visiting these places.
Well, I think education is very important. I think that we need to go and visit all our frequent bars and restaurants and just ask, pose a question. If your residents or your patrons come in to smoke, where is the designated area? A lot of people don't think no. I mean, they know we have an ordinance, and they understand that, but there's nobody like on staff to let them know the smoking area is over here. And so we send staff to already set precedents on what is allowed and what isn't. I think that that's a great start. And working with this company, getting them maybe access to the chief, the assistant chief, or somebody, patrol, hiring a security guard in the front to help alleviate the strain of losing business, I think that that's a great help. And so that's my comment.
Okay, any other?
I think the operative phrase here, Mayor, is there is a least restrictive option. Yes, they wanna have the smoking section, fine. You know, come back later with proper reasons for it. But what they have is a security issue. That does not warrant us changing our ordinances to accommodate something else.
I don't think they have a security issue. I think the intent is that if they would've sent the engineer over here with the system because it's not a security issue only. I think that's only one item.
Mayor, but my point is, is that they don't have standing to make this argument because they're arguing that people are not paying, okay? We'll take care of that. That doesn't jump into allowing them to change the smoking ordinance. So I wouldn't be in favor of this amendment.
Mayor, so may I make a motion to deny the...
Yes, I recognize your motion, Mr....
I'll second.
We have a second to deny ordinance 4726 as it stands right now under item 3.25. Any other question? No other question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. 3.25, Mr. Acevedo, is not approved. 3.26, Mr. Tadas.
Give it an ordinance number, do you? We don't give it an ordinance number, do you?
No.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 3.26, approval of work authorization number 13 with Mullen and Hunt for sanitary sewer improvements for Conway in the vicinity of Mall 2 and the city limits. Professional services for plants and specifications for sanitary sewer improvements for Conway. Estimated cost about $162,548. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion, and do I hear a second? We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. 3.26 is approved, Mr. Tadas, and 3.27.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 3.27, approval of work authorization number 14 with Mullen and Hunt for sanitary sewer improvements for Sherry Road in the vicinity between FM 495 and Mall 2. For professional services for plants and specifications for the sanitary sewer improvements for Sherry Road, estimated cost to $60,900. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? I only heard one aye. I need...
Aye.
I need three aye. Mr. Martinez?
Gus is besting.
Mr. Martinez is...
And I visit down there.
Gus, are you an aye?
Yeah. 3.27 is being approved, Mr. Tadas. Okay?
Thank you.
3.28, Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Mayor, I do not know if Mr. Cruz is here.
Is Sergio Cruz here?
No.
Sergio...no, no, I don't see him.
Mayor and Council, this would be a board appointment for the Youth Advocacy Advisory Board, which is the Boys and Girls Club, and this is to appoint Mr. Sergio Cruz and is to replace Mr. Cipriano Sines, who resigned. His letter of resignation is in the packet, and this term is to expire December 31st of 2019.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. 3.28 is approved, Ms. Carrillo. 3.29, Ms. Vella, budget amendment.
Item 3.29 is approval of the attached budget amendments. We have two, both of which are reclassifications. In the CDBG Fund, we have a reclassification of $1,300 for capital outlay. The amendment is for funds to purchase one computer to replace an existing computer. And we have, in the MEDC Operating Fund, a reclassification of $103,080 for personnel, which is for funds to budget for the hiring of cleaning staff for the seed building. This service will be in-house going forward. MEDC Board approved the amendment on October 23rd, 2018. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 3.29. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. 3.29 is approved, Ms. Vella. 3.30, Mr. Benson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I have before you item 3.30, which is consideration for the approval for submission of a grant application to the Hidalgo County Metropolitan Organization Transportation Alternative Program. Funding is to support the Hidalgo County Active Mobility Plan. This is a shared grant with neighboring Hidalgo Counties, Hidalgo County communities. This is to provide a means to implement a seamless and unified network of hike and bike trails across Hidalgo County on the east-to-west corridor. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 3.30. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. 3.30, Mr. Benson is approved.
Good luck. I can't wait for that.
Good luck, yes.
Thank you, Brad.
I wanna call for 4.0 unfinished business. We have none. 4.1, we have none. At this, 5.0 routine matters. 5.1, city manager's comment.
Mayor, just to let you know, we did open a warming shelter this afternoon at about 2:00 p.m. This is gonna be going through till tomorrow, obviously due to the temperatures. I understand also the Mission School District's gonna be opening up the schools a little late also tomorrow, so we're gonna be monitoring that with our emergency management coordinator to see till what date we would continue with this.
Anything else, Ms.? Okay, I do wanna announce 5.2, from Mayor's comment, that the resolution that we passed the last time on blindness, we converted them to braille. So I don't know if you have it here with you or not, you know? No, that's okay. That's okay. I just wanna let the public know that we converted to braille, and we're gonna deliver it to Ms. Macarena Peña, who is an association deal, so she'll be able to share it with those people that are blind. We actually...I think that was very deserving. And Mr. Garcia, I wanna thank you for taking that with your staff, the opportunity to take that as a lead and to convert it to the braille. I think the whole inclusion part in the American Disability Act and including everybody, and I go back to the experience that I had learning about the blind walk myself, you know? I learned a lot of things that I took for granted, you know? And there were three quick things that I learned real quick with a stick. One is that you can use it to feel the stick, so when you're blind and you're walking around, you can feel the items. That's number one. Number two is that the size of the stick has the size of three steps. So you clear one step, two steps, and three steps, and then you progress to three more and three more. And the third main thing was that I used that stick to hit the curb, and then I cleared three steps, and then the fourth one, I hit the curb, so I knew I had to raise my foot up to get to the curb so I could get into the sidewalk. And once I recognized the sidewalk, then I had the opportunity And when I, once I recognized the sidewalk, then I had the opportunity to be able to go get out to the finish line and, and take my, my blinds off, you know? Because it's a, it's a very scary situation to be under those, those situations. But one of these days, if you can experience that, and I know the firefighters experienced it during, during the training, because I know that, that we, that we use what is called a self-containment apparatus mask, masking of, of the apparatus, because I've gone through that training also and instructed that part also myself, as far as that is concerned. And I know it's a, it's a very unique feeling. I don't know, I'm out of words how to describe that unique feeling. But I, at one time or another, I do thank my, my grandma that gave me that experience and that, that vision for me to, to be able to take that, that giant step, even though it was, there were small steps, but they were really giant steps to my, to my, my learning, as far as that is concerned. Other than that, at 5.3, I will start with the city council comments, and I'll start with Mr. Martinez from...
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, it's the, the wind chill is going to get below freezing tonight, so I urge our citizens to take care of their pets, bring in their dogs and their cats, put them in the garage, find them shelter. Not kidding.
Yes. Ms. Garza?
Yes, well, today's meeting, y'all know, is being held on Tuesday because yesterday was Veterans Day. Our nation celebrated Veterans Day yesterday in, in honor of our veterans who are serving and have served. So, I'd like to take this time to say thank you to all of those servicemen and women.
Yes. Mr. Plata?
Thursday, we're having the more appreciation dinner, and I think we're having the celebration that Martin is leaving. No, we're not celebrating, but I mean, we're going to miss Martin. I think he has done a great job for the last, how many years, Martin? But everything continues. I just want to encourage all of the directors to continue with that professionalism. Take pride on what you do. We need your help. We need the city. There's a lot of citizens that count on us and y'all to, to provide great services. We just got to must, we must continue and, like I say, you know the departments better than us, and I'm speaking for myself. Try to go by policies and procedures. They there for a reason. I mean, and don't deviate for it. There's exceptions for it. Always try to get approval for that. I mean, we need you. I mean, this is a time of the year where we learn to, to thank each other for, the world was not made just to be lived by one individual. We got to work together to make Mission a better place to live. So, if I don't see you, have a happy Thanksgiving, and may God continue blessing the city of Mission.
Thank you, Mr. Plata. Ms. Ochoa?
I just want to thank Martin Garza for many years of dedication. I've seen him here lately, and I'm a little jealous because he's like, it seems a little stress-free. I see him smiling a lot. You know, I'm not going to lie to you, I was extremely shocked when he did call me. He doesn't call, he wouldn't call me very often, telling me, I need to meet you somewhere and I need to do it like now. And so, I knew it was something important. But I too am putting family first, and so, I totally understand where you're coming from, and, and I look forward to still working with you in different projects, and I hope that your wife and your children allow you to. With that being said, I'm excited for what the future holds for our beautiful city of Mission. I think we have plenty of more than competent directors that are going to continue to lead us in the direction that we want to go to. And just rest assured that Martin being there, just a phone call away, I think that we'll be good. And so, thank you, Martin, for all your years of dedication and service, and, and good luck in your new journey.
Thank you. And if I may, Mayor, I wanted to say a few words regarding that, but I know it's on the agenda, so I want to touch the subject.
I was going to say, you're out of order, but I practiced that one a long time ago.
Do that same care anymore.
As chair, I have the privilege, as chair, that I have to recall 5.0 at 5.1 also, and I'll let the city managers comment, I'll call back the city managers' comment. So, you're still the city manager.
I was just going to say, I'm really grateful for the opportunity. I've been really, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Mission in this capacity. You know, I can't say, but you know, public service is a wonderful career. It's a wonderful experience. All of us who serve in public service, our fighters, police officers, we understand that very well, you all as directors. And so, it's a great feeling, but you know, it, it's, it just felt that it was time for, for my family and I to move forward, especially now during the holidays. But I just want to give every single member here of the council a great thank you for the opportunity that was given to me and to my family. And so, it's been a great career. It's been a wonderful experience, and you know, I'm still living in Mission, so anything that I can serve you all with, I'll be more happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Thank you, Martin. After that, go ahead and entertain the motion to go to executive session pursuant to ATCA Government Code, section 551.001.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? We will move into executive session, and as soon as we finish, we'll come back. I will entertain the motion to reconvene.
I'll move.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries on, I am calling for item 6.1 on the executive session.
Mayor and Council, item 6.1A, deliberation regarding acceptance of city manager's retirement and matters incident thereto. After discussion of receiving Mr. Martin Garza's letter of retirement, we would need a motion to acknowledge and accept the retirement of Mr. Martin Garza to be effective December 31st, 2018.
I'll move.
Second.
However, upon retirement, upon retirement and execution of release, and in consideration for waiving any and all claims for payment of accrued leave and all other contractual terms, authorize the finance department to pay Mr. Garza pursuant to executive session, Mayor.
We have a motion, Mr. Plata?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Congratulations, Martin, and you're welcome.
6.2?
Item 6.2A, consideration of the legal aspects of city manager position, including the appointment and duties of interim city manager. After considering all items and discussions and questions, we would need a, a motion from the council to appoint Mr. Randy Bettis interim and acting city manager with an effective date of immediately, and to assume all duties and responsibilities of city manager as per city charter, and to authorize staff to take all necessary actions to effectuate the change in management. And in consideration for the additional duties to be performed, a stipend in the amount of $1,666.67 while he is serving in the capacity of acting manager.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
Do I hear it? Do I hear it a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, and congratulations, Randy. Come over to the podium and real brief before I call item 6.3. We're still on 6.2.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Appreciate, I'm very humbled by the opportunity. Appreciate the, the confidence in, in appointing me in the position to serve in this capacity of this, you know, city of Mission that I've worked for 17 years, and so, appreciate it. Thank you very much. We'll continue working hard and with the group, good group of, of team of directors that we have and staff to continue the service that we currently provide. And so, thank you again. Appreciate the opportunity, and may God bless the city of Mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Under the same thing, at 6.2, I'm going to ask a photographer to see if he could take a shot from the middle with, with us, with the, with the council, and with Mr. Martin Garza for, for history books, you know, and for his family.
From here?
As far as...
Well, like we're working?
Like, and yes. Act like we're working.
Let me get something to eat first.
Standing up?
Standing up.
And then one with Randy in the salsa. In the middle.
Randy. Now you go to the center. Now you go to the center.
That's my spot for lunch.
Yeah, yeah, I see, I see. I get it, man.
Now, before you leave, Randy, you want to come over so we can...
One with and one without.
The middle, no?
Now I will call 6.3.
Mayor, item 6.3A, discussion of potential acquisition of real property along Holland Avenue for possible expansion in municipal cemetery. After discussion, we would need a motion to authorize city manager and staff to engage in preliminary discussions with property owners along Holland Avenue for the person, for the purpose of possible acquisition of property, for the possible expansion of municipal cemetery, and further authorize staff to obtain an independent appraisal of property determined necessary for such expansion.
I'll move. We have a motion and a second to approve 6.3. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
We have a second. It is not debatable, so I'm not going to ask for questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? We're adjourning.